January twenty seventh, meeting of the Anderson Township Zoning Commission. Can we take attendance, please?
Mr. Denning? Mr. Dungus? Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Here.
Ms. McBride?
Here. So, on our agenda this evening, first of all, we have the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to do that?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
And is there a second? All in favor? Aye. And second item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of our December sixteenth meeting.
And we do not have-
I was just gonna ask that. I don't think we have-
We don't have enough here for that, so we can postpone that till February.
Okay. Do we need a motion?
I don't think so.
The third item then on our agenda this evening is discussion of text amendments to the Anderson Township zoning resolution. Paul, would you like to start us out with a-
Thank you. These are various requests, and we'll go through each exhibit, so we'll go into more detail of that. Just from case history, the text amendments were initiated by the Board of Township Trustees in November of twenty nineteen. The case was heard before regional planning on January the ninth. And regional planning recommended approval with some suggestions for modifications, which we'll go over. The township has incorporated their suggestions. You all know that zoning resolution was adopted by the trustees in nineteen eighty-eight. Prior to that, it was under Hamilton County zoning, which took effect in nineteen forty-eight. The last modification that we had was in twenty sixteen, and this was to incorporate microbreweries, micro distilleries, breweries and distilleries. And then prior to that, there was a reformat of the zoning resolution. That was in twenty fifteen. No text changes were approved at that time. It was really just a reformat to reorganize the document to make it easier to read and understand. And it was better online as well, and we added some links to it. But there was one item in there that is in the amendments that was omitted during that change that we've since found, so that will be discussed tonight as well. The issues that are before you are just zoning issues that have come up over this past year or past two years from residents, from business owners. So, some amendments are for clarification. Some are new items that weren't initially comprehended in nineteen forty-eight, so, or nineteen eighty-eight for that matter. And again, we did research, staff did research. Our text amendments in the staff report, there are some citations of where the language comes from. We borrowed language from other communities. A lot of this was not, or, and we also had our legal counsel review the amendments. So, we'll start with Exhibit A. The text that is proposed to be added is underlined, and the text that is proposed to be removed is struck through. So, the first item under Exhibit A, the topic was massage therapy. And we do have this up. So, this issue came several years ago. You probably saw it in the news. We had several massage businesses that opened up under the auspice of massage therapy, but they were technically sexually-oriented businesses, so they were closed. And the purpose of this amendment is to further define and differentiate massage therapy from massage parlor. So, there's a proposed definition for massage therapy. This would be allowed in our retail zoning districts. And the massage parlors or sexually-oriented businesses are only permitted in the ID zoning district. I don't know if you all, if you have questions, we can take them through the exhibits, or we can wait till the end. Did you all have any?
I have a question.
Okay.
In the state of Ohio, are a masseur and masseuse?
Masseuse.
Are they licensed?
Yes, they are. Mm-hmm. It's similar to personal care business, just like a barber is licensed, a beautician is licensed. And then there are other, a physical therapist, a chiropractor, you know, the other items here would also be permitted under that definition. So, your massage envy, your, where are some of the other ones in the township that we had? There's- Valenti did have, yes. So, those would still be permitted under massage therapy. This is really aimed at those that aren't licensed and are trying to go under the law, basically. Okay, so if there aren't any questions for that, we'll go on to Exhibit B. The topic here is medical marijuana. The township trustees, when, before medical marijuana was approved by the state of Ohio, put a moratorium on all the cultivation, processing, and dispensing of marijuana, medical marijuana. And the trustees felt that all along that this processing and cultivating would be a permitted use in our ID zoning district because it takes on more of an industrial-type use. It's, the process is conducted within the confines of a greenhouse and within a building, and they felt that it would be a permitted use. However, there was not the interest of having the dispensaries in the township. So, this definition, it adds the definitions of cultivate, cultivate, or dispensary dispense into our zoning resolution, which did not have those definitions in there, same way as marijuana business and processor. So, those are still permitted in the ID zoning district, the cultivation and the processing. However, dispensing, the trustees passed a separate resolution that banned dispensing throughout the township. So, that is no longer going to be in our zoning resolution. We did recommend it, BI, item number twenty-two. This is on page three of your staff report. Hamilton County Regional Planning suggested that that be removed because they felt it was redundant from the trustees' resolution that was separate from the zoning resolution that bans it township-wide. At the suggestion of our legal counsel, though, we will reference that resolution. So, if you are, you know, looking at the zoning resolution, there'll be a reference to that separate resolution outside the zoning resolution of the, that bans dispensaries throughout the township.
So, so basically what this is, because it's the growing activities allowed in the industrial, but the selling activity is prohibited in the, I'm gonna say generally, commercial, that's why we need to have these definitions to distinguish?
Correct.
And I just want to be clear. So, we're still gonna provide the definition of the dispensary and dispense?
Correct. The definition will be there.
It's just not permitted anywhere.
Correct. And then item number twenty-one, this was a, an omission when the reformatting of the zoning resolution. So, the item that is underlined, that was originally approved in, in the old resolution, and then when it was reformatted, that specific, except as permitted, Article four point five, was accidentally omitted, so we're adding that back in. It really probably didn't have to be as a text amendment, but we wanted to just include it, just be safe and sorry. So, that's Exhibit B. Exhibit C is referred to as short-term rentals. Currently, the township does not regulate short-term rentals, so this is Airbnb, VRBO, home away, any type of short-term rental. The township is currently not regulating them. So, the township is proposing to include them as conditional uses. So, a short-term rental would be subject to a conditional use review by our Board of Zoning Appeals and subject to the following conditions, which, you know, I don't know that we included the conditions. We didn't include the actual conditions, but if, if you did want me to read off those conditions, I'd be happy to read those off to you. Would you, okay. And we'll make sure that that gets added into the trustees' report if you approve it. So, item F is parking shall not be permitted in the area defined as a front yard setback of the existing zoning district. H is the vehicular use area shall be located and designed so as to minimize impact on the neighborhood. L, measures shall be taken to minimize the impact of potential nuisance, such as noise, odor, vibration, and dust on adjacent properties. And these, these somewhat reflect our bed and breakfast regulations that we already have in place. L is no exterior alterations of an existing structure shall be made that depart from the residential character of the building. All new structures shall be compatible in residential design with the surrounding neighborhood. However, any improvement required by code or necessitated by licensing's requirement should not be deemed incompatible. That would be your handicap accessibility components or anything of that nature, fire access or fire code requirements. S would be all exterior lighting shall be directed away from adjacent residential properties. V, the applicant shall provide a plan indicating the manner in which the facility will maintain contact with the neighborhood residents along with a structured procedure whereby residents grievances may be filed with the township and resolved by the facility. X, meals shall be served only to guests or residents of the facility and not to the general public. Z is an emergency response plan shall be submitted detailing safety measures and response procedures. So, the complaints that we have received so far are noise nuisance-type things. And then, just, you know, activity, if there's a VRBO in a single-family neighborhood, just activity not necessarily conducive to that neighborhood. So, we feel that placing these conditions, especially having a plan in place of who to contact if complaints do arise, also measures to be taken to minimize the impact of potential nuisances. So, these would be reviewed by our Board of Zoning Appeals at the time when a hearing would be, would be had. And it would help the township too for zoning enforcement. Now, there's not, they're not really regulated. If there are noise issues, that, that really just gets back to the servant of peace and the sheriff call. The bed and breakfast is, the definition of a bed and breakfast, that's a good question. So, bed and breakfast, the definition is a private owner occupied residence with one to three guest rooms contained within that structure and operates so that guests reside at the home for no longer than two continuous weeks. No kitchen facilities may be provided for use by guests. The Airbnbs, the short-term rentals, some of them are one-room only, that you have access to the remainder of the house, so you, and you could, you have access to the kitchen. The other, there are some other nuances with the bed and breakfast. The owner is there on, onsite the entire time, whereas a short-term rental, the owner doesn't have to be onsite. So, that's probably the biggest difference, difference between the two. And bed and breakfast was, we've had that in our zoning resolution for quite some time. That's, that's probably the, the biggest difference is that the owner for bed and breakfast was always intended to be onsite, whereas for the, our, our short-term rental, that's not always the case.
Where, where have we been? What's the demand that has been drawing short-term rentals to Anderson Township?
Well, we did just a quick search today, just to be up to speed, and we have about twenty-one.
Wow.
That's a lot.
It is a lot. Now, that was a little deceiving too, and, and don't quote us on that because if, if, they don't give exact addresses until you start renting or start that process. So, it will give you a vicinity. So, some of these could be in Mount Washington. Some of them could be in Newtown. But there are that many in the vicinity.
Do you know what it is that are bringing people to rent them here?
I don't. And they range from an entire house to a room.
And you said there had been some noise complaints and stuff. What's the, what, when you looked into that, what was going on with those at least that we know about?
The one in particular that we received probably the most complaints on had a pool and, which pools are allowed anyway, no matter. That was the one that we had the most complaints of noise coming from just the outside area.
It's a little tricky once you grant conditional use. They, they can be a zoning violation, but it's never clear or frowned upon about revoking a conditional use if you have so many complaints or you have to take enforcement or something like that. Have you thought about maybe having something in there that if it continues to be a problem, you know, like, like a liquor license, you get a shot at reviewing that every once in a while if it's a real problem. It can be revoked. I, I think it might be worthwhile to explore that. Might not, that's something Gary could look into maybe for you and see if that's possible. But, but that'd be nice because if you're, you're out there, out there, out there, and you're having to go to the municipal court, and those people aren't even there, they were only there once, it could be quite tedious, I think, from an enforcement standpoint. Whereas if you just have a running scorecard on a property, it would be nice if you could just say, you know, this just isn't working and we're revoking that. So, maybe you could look into that?
Okay.
I would suggest.
I guess that kinda ties into the question I had, which was, how are we gonna enforce that, you know? I guess you're not gonna know if somebody's, are we gonna be reviewing the listings? Or how are you gonna know somebody is on verbo unless it, somebody complains or you happen upon it if you check the list every week or something?
And we don't intend to check the list frequently.
You got other things to do.
If at all, right, because we generally are complaint-based. So, it, it does give us a tool that if we receive a complaint, we could follow up with it from that aspect. Of course, this amendment wouldn't impact the ones that are already in existence. They would-
Noncomply.
Would be nonconforming, so it would be from this point moving forward.
So, they would obtain a conditional use, and then they could literally rent the house out to three hundred and sixty-five different people, three hundred and sixty-five different nights? Is that, okay. And then I-
And, and, and that's, it's interesting because that, that does happen now to a certain extent. Someone may rent out a room, and we don't regulate that as long as the house itself can be used as a single family. So, you have a four-bedroom house, you're renting out one of the rooms, but the house itself is being used as a single family, and that technically is considered a single family. This is meant really for the short term, the more transient, where you have multiple people. But, but with this, yes, you could have a renter each night, a different person in the house each night, yes.
And, and then the question I had, because I've only done this a couple of times, and I can't remember if I paid verbo or Airbnb, because the, the way the wording is, it says for which the guest compensates an owner or lesssee. And I was thinking that I compensated verbo, and they in turn compensated the property owner. And I, I could be wrong about that, but that's kinda what I remembered. And so, I, it just concerned me a little bit about-
Okay.
Well, you're not compensating me directly. You're compensating a third party, so I'm exempt from that.
Okay. That's something we can look into as well.
And then the last thing, the other part I had was relative to the building code and so forth, are we putting anything in our conditional use that, I mean, you know, I've seen it where there's been a verbo listing in, in Springdale, and it was basically an unfinished basement, and it only had the one means of ingress and egress, clearly didn't meet the Fire Life Safety Code. How are we gonna be assured that, I mean, that the, these places really are safe for folks to occupy?
Okay.
I mean, if we're issuing conditional, we're giving zoning approval. I realize that's kinda like the next level, but I think we have a little bit of concern, so to speak, about that.
Okay, so that's something we can look into as well.
Has, has there been thought, Paul, as you guys formulated this, because you had to think about this a lot, that maybe, that's just not a, is it something that you as staff feel like it's something we wanna allow in single-family? Or is it just, this gives us some tools to deal with, deal with it? Has there been thought of, maybe we just don't want these in single-family districts because it's like a hotel?
The demand hasn't been there for the township like it has, you know, more for the urban areas or for, so, we, we didn't move, you know, we didn't propose a text amendment right away when these became popular, the Airbnb. The only time it became real, very popular was when the All-Star gang was in town, and you couldn't find accommodations downtown or closer to downtown. But then we did start getting a few complaints of a few properties, and it's not widespread compared to the number of rentals according to the website. We haven't had a lot, so I think, and we don't have a hotel tax. It's, you know, that's a big issue with some areas too, that hotels are being taxed and these are not, so that's not necessarily, wasn't an issue either. It was, it was more, we, we started moving toward amendments just because of the few complaints, and we felt that they were having negative impacts on some of the single-family neighborhoods. And that's really where it is, is in the neighborhoods, when, not necessarily.
Right.
When you don't have close neighbors, you know.
That's why I'm wondering if, is they're getting down to these details of, you know, five or six enumerated conditions? If we're just saying, well, maybe they're just not allowed unless you have a period of, like a rental period of thirty days or more. I don't know. That's just kinda where I'm at. I think, well, it could be disruptive to have it in a single-family neighborhood, I think.
Well, so, it's something we can do more research on. We can, and we'll take your questions. We can go to the next exhibit too. And if you all feel comfortable with those, we can move those forward, but do more research on the short-term rentals.
Yeah, just another thought. I mean, we obviously write a lot of zoning codes, and obviously this issue's come up at our place a lot. We did a ton of research for Hamilton, the city of Hamilton. They chose to do theirs as a business agreement as opposed to part of the zoning resolution. Other places are, you know, just putting their head in the sand and, hey, we're not gonna say anything.
Yes.
We'll wait and see how many complaints we get. So, they, I, I don't know if the township could do something like Hamilton and stuff. I'd be happy to share that research with you.
We can certainly look at it. We, we looked at Oxford's too. Oxford, they're a much different situation, but as a township, we were very limited on how we, we can't license. But there may be a way we can handle it through zoning, somewhat comparable. So, okay. So, the, the notes I jotted down, or can we revoke a conditional use permit if you receive so many complaints? The language regarding compensation, how can we guarantee that the buildings are safe, meet the building code, fire code? Not allowing them at all. Okay. Is that, okay, okay. So, our last one is Exhibit, oh, two more, I'm sorry. So, Exhibit D is regarding planned unit developments. As you know, we had several that came before the zoning commission last year. One in particular, there was a question of whether dedicated, or, or property that was already dedicated as open space or was in a protective covenant or protective easement, could that be used toward the overall density calculation of that? And there was mixed feelings on that, but I think it was determined in the future the township was not supportive of that. So, the other item on here was just adding another standard regarding the developer proposing the PUD, and the PUD having a stronger standard in there regarding slopes, floodplain areas, wetland areas, and that sort of thing. So, we proposed two different amendments. One is the density determination, and this was adding, or better defining, developable land. So, developable land shall exclude land within public or private road right-of-way and land subject to public or nonpublic profit easement or similar development restrictions. And then the condition was number fifteen, or the standard, I should say, whether the development provides adequate protection of natural features on the property, including land over twenty percent slope. The twenty percent slope was taken from our comprehensive plan. That was a recommendation from our comprehensive plan. Floodplain and wetland areas, areas permanently inundated by water, and areas protected by the Ohio Department of Natural Resources. So, we, we didn't want to discount that under the density determination because we didn't want to discourage developers from using this tool because we felt that it is important to preserve those areas, and one tool to preserve those areas is allowing the cluster of homes onto the more developable piece of that property. So, we were trying to find a happy balance to make sure, we still encourage the use of a PUD because in, in some fashions with a standard subdivision, the entire site will be disturbed, which we're seeing that now in one of the developments that chose not to have a PUD. So, the entire site can still be disturbed with a standard subdivision. So, you know, the intent of a PUD is to encourage responsible development of the property, and one of that is an incentive of moving the houses closer together. So, those are the two items that are proposed for that. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
When you say proposed, are they being accepted in tandem? Or is one preferred of any other ones confused or proposed? Are you proposed to us tonight?
So, the, so what's underlined would be new text for the zoning resolution. And so, we are better defining density and how that's computed. So, we're saying that the entire property can be included toward your density calculation except rights, road right-of-way, and then land subject to an easement or similar development restriction. So, that, that could be a conservation easement. It could be area that's already, maybe it's a hillside preservation. So, that land that's already in a protective covenant not to be developed could not be used toward your density calculation.
Was there a specific reasoning for detaching the sensitive soils and slopes and things from the definition of nondevelopable land? Seems sort of intentional?
So, this, number fifteen, there are a list of standards for the zoning commission to consider when approving or denying a PUD. So, this is an additional, number fifteen. So, there are already fourteen standards that the zoning commission is to consider. Number fifte, this would be the fifteenth standard, and it's, does it provide adequate protection of the features, the slope, the floodplain?
And that's my last question. Why, why is it, provides adequate protection for, which is sort of fungible versus explicitly?
Taking that land in particular out of the question, so we want to provide some incentive for a developer to use this tool for responsible development. A floodplain can be filled or piped. A hillside can be graded. In a standard subdivision, pretty much any site can be developed. So, we, we want to still encourage them to use the PUD because the PUD would allow some protection of the sensitive areas. So, this is really a standard that the zoning commission would use.
I didn't like it. I'm excited because we did do one to the different areas.
Right.
I just worry that now we're being put in a position of the, kinda defending what is, what is adequate protection, what, what-
And I think that's what the developer or the applicant would need to present to the zoning commission. Now, before, we didn't have a percentage of slope in there for, for hillsides, and we did add that. That is new. We, there was mention of floodplain, but now it specifically mentions floodplain and wetland areas. We did not take, and it does say areas per, permanently inundated by water. So, we didn't take, we left that in there as a standard because we felt like that land could be used or should be used as a density, because we saw, in this past year, we saw one PUD that was before you that tried to use a lake. We saw a straight subdivision that they are using the lake and building houses there. So, this will at least allow the zoning commission, you know, you, you can develop a lake if you so choose.
So, this, this trade-off, you, you get to use the density the lake would allow, but the zoning commission's gonna be able to look that over and say, but you're protecting the lake. Is that the trade-off?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, or, or are you using it as an amenity to your development?
Yeah.
You know.
Does it make sense to add the typical, including the company to land, dot, 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 just- Does it make sense to add the typical including the non-need to land, dot, 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 just because there are other specific things that might be sensitive that aren't listed?
We can, mm-hmm, we can look at that, make sure it doesn't.
Think, you know, the gigantic oak tree or the sycamore that someone mentioned, which might have some heritage associated with it, so.
Okay.
I was wondering on, on the developable land, it excludes from the calculation, public or private roads? Should we, should, did you mean to include also proposed, because a lot of times we'd get the subdivisions and it's just proposed right away, but it's still actually private?
Right.
So you meant to, we would be excluding.
They would be excluded.
And that, that's captured in this language adequately?
Yes, uh-huh.
All right.
That would, you cannot use that to count toward your density.
Got you.
But it would include, utility easements would have to be backed down. Because it said, it doesn't say, it says land subject to public easements, which would be a Duke easement or a MSD easement or whatever.
Right.
Any other questions on that one, Gus?
Okay, last but not least, our zoning resolution does not differentiate between a mural and a wall sign. And our We Thrive Anderson Committee is encouraging more public art throughout the township, and this is one item that discourages public art, discourages creativity in murals, we've had several businesses that wanted to put up a mural that did not necessarily advertise their business, it was meant to be a public art, so this language was taken from the city of Cincinnati's zoning code, and we're adding a definition of a mural and a definition of non-commercial sign. And essentially, if it meets the definition of a mural, it would not be regulated, if it met. If it did not meet that definition, then it would still consider a wall sign, so take for instance the Skyline murals, they did reference Skyline, they did reference the business at hand, so that would have been regulated and still would have gone through the zoning commission. If they wanted to paint, you know, something else on that building, it, it would not have been regulated. Salem Gardens, for instance, has a picture of a cheeseburger on top of the building.
The one question I have, Paul, is that, I know the city code, because I've worked with their mural ordinance, it limits the number of murals per building, I think to two, maybe? Do we want to put any kind of limit on the number of, I, I don't know, I just, the city does, they, I think they do limit the number of murals.
But I, I don't think we saw a reason to.
Just a question. Well, I mean, in, in the city code, it's pretty, it's pretty clear, so, you know, that's why I was just, I didn't know if.
Okay.
I had one question on that, just get a little nervous when we're talking about what's a sign and what isn't a sign when we talk about the language that's contained in it, because when you look at the case law and that, they just beat you over the head saying you cannot regulate it based on its content. So I, but, I do really like the idea of trying to distinguish somehow a mural from a sign, that question comes up all the time. But I, I don't think we should reference, we determine that by the language containing it, I think that's.
Because it's not content neutral, you got to look at it.
That's right.
In order to tell if it's.
Yeah, so I, so I wish I had a better suggestion for you, it's, that's, that's a very difficult issue. But I would at least say don't explicitly call out language as a, as a limiter.
And if this becomes exempt, other than the sign regulations, is there concern that it happens in a painting, it's intensive mural, or would be a.
That's a good question. And if it does fall into disrepair, it, it may fall under our property maintenance code. Painting and peeling paint on a building does, is subject to our property maintenance code, and that is for commercial and residential buildings. So, you know, if it's faded, that's one thing, if it does start really peeling and chipping, then that could be enforced under our property maintenance code.
Did Gary get a chance to tell the good with this?
Yes.
And you were okay with the content stuff?
Is there anything explicitly that would be a mural to be?
We treat them as wall signs, so any mural, we would regulate as a wall sign, and you are limited to the size of a wall sign, each building is permitted. So the, the ones that are out there now, Skyline was approved through the zoning commission as part of the PUD for that building. Keynes has one, but they were within their allotment for wall signage. You're allowed two hundred and fifty square feet of wall signage, that's the maximum that you can have, and you can split it up on your building, so as long as you have a fairly large facade, our, our wall signage allotments are pretty generous. The Lounge, they painted their sign on, but it was the size of a wall sign, so it was permitted as a wall sign. Trying to think of some of the other ones that we've had. Right, we do have a couple other businesses that have expressed interest in putting up a wall sign, but they're kind of waiting depending how this turns out, or, or murals.
So is this in effect sort of saying that a mural is a mural if it does contain a non-commercial sign? Is it in essence what all this works?
So, sign is not.
It's only exempted if it has a non-commercial sign.
Correct.
So, but if it doesn't have any signage, signage at all, I think I'm getting hung up on the term signage, because it's not actually what it's.
Do you want me to try to explain?
Sarah was very interested.
So, eh. The, where we kind of started to go with this was that a mural was not a sign based off if it was non-commercial, or it was a sign if it related to the business there. So, eh, in terms of your question, the signage aspect, yes, a mural would be a mural if it's a non-commercial sign.
So, for example, the Salem Gardens sign, mural, is really a sign.
It's a sign.
So it is not a mural.
It's their logo.
Because it's got the cheeseburger and they offer cheeseburgers.
Their logo, it's the same cheeseburger man that's on their awnings as well, so it, it is their logo. But like, Skyline has the one that is the literal skyline of Cincinnati, and it says, founded in Anderson Township, and the date, and that would be considered a mural and not, like, the one that's on the side as you're going down Beechmont towards Salem that says Skyline across it.
And actually, that one on the east side of the building, Paul, you will recall, was supposed to be a mural, it was not supposed to say Skyline.
Correct.
So, um, but there was nothing we could do about it at the time, because we had approved it as a sign, and again, we couldn't regulate the content, as Paul and I discussed, I think, by things.
I'm just, I'm actually, I like the spirit of it, I'm confused by the actual language where if the mural contains a non-commercial sign, then is it, then it is exempt from the sign regulations? Isn't it exempt already by being a mural? I mean, what I'm getting at is what if it's just a mural and it doesn't have, does it make sense what I'm confused by?
Okay, no, go ahead.
So we had to define non-commercial sign, because in the definition of a mural, it references a non-commercial sign. So then we also had to define a non-commercial sign, but a non-commercial sign would be, is, is permitted as a mural versus a commercial sign. So commercial signs are still going to be regulated by our wall signage. Did I say that right, okay, so, commercial signage is still regulated like it always has been. A mural is a, and can incorporate a non-commercial sign, but we needed to add the definition of a non-commer- non-commercial sign because we didn't have that in our zoning resolution, and we do reference it in the definition of the mural.
I think my hang-up is that it isn't abundantly clear that the mural itself is exempt also, whether or not it has a non-commercial sign or not. It sort of seems like it's contingent upon there being a non-commercial sign, then it will be exempt.
But it's kind of shows the flip.
That makes sense, right.
If it says the mural is considered a sign, it's got the flip in there, you know what I mean?
Okay, maybe we should add some language saying that a mural is exempt. Yeah, okay. Okay. Okay, any other questions on exhibit B, or E, I'm sorry?
Don't take it back.
E.
So do we need to have this text amendments, public hearing?
Yes, it was a public hearing.
Okay, I'm going to need to see what time it is.
It's fine, but we don't need to swear anything in it.
This was just kind of a work session on this?
No, no, we need to take testimony from the audience, yeah.
You need a motion?
To open the public hearing?
Well, we are, we're still open.
Okay.
We just need to take testimony from the audience if anyone wants to.
Would you like to come up and address the commission and give us your name and address?
Right up here?
Yep, that'd be great.
Hello, I'm Guy Wolf at six thousand one Stirrup Road, and it's good to see you all again. Seen each other many times on, on the PUD development. And, and this time, I'm, I'm very supportive of, of modernizing the zoning, and in the direction of it, appears the intent is to keep this a very safe and beautiful and desirable location. One of the areas I'm particularly interested in is on the PUD zoning standards. And, and just starting out here with the, the twenty percent slope, I know that, having been through several of these, that this group sometimes struggles with the discussion about very steep slopes and how risky that is, but in the end, it doesn't appear to have weighed the group in a decision with the default to, certainly there are engineers who are more trained and will make a judgment on this, that somehow we can't rule on something even though it looks very risky, that we would be reluctant to rule on that because of our lack of expertise or something, at least that's the impression that I've seen in several that have come through here. As far as I know, none have been denied due to the steep slopes. So I guess a, a question for me is, does this language, how does this language change the zoning commission's authority or clarity about making a decision about a PUD that's, that clearly uses very steep slopes?
So, we're going to have to turn our chair over to Mr. Elif, and this is just taking testimony, so if you'll just pose your questions, and then we'll close the public hearing and go from there.
Then, so that would be my first question, do, do I need to summarize that, or is that?
I think you said, how does this new standard help the board make a definitive decision on approval of what is a steep slope or not?
Yeah, that's, that's a good summary.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Second, on the density calculation, and I've, I've been through a few where some things are included or not included, the develop, developable land is a, a better standard. But it's not clear to me, for instance, there's one PUD right now that's under appeal, if that one actually complies with this definition of what developable land is. So that, that would be my second question, I guess, for this group.
So your question is, is there's a PUD under appeal right now?
Right, I don't know the number of it, but it's on Clough, and it's about sixty-six or sixty-nine units.
And, and your question to us is, does it, would, would that subdivision under appeal comply with these new standards?
Correct.
Okay.
And then just a, a statement on the, on the PUD, and intent of a PUD is a good intent. What I have seen, though, is that the expression preserving undeveloped space, it, it's actually not preserving, in most cases, what I've seen is re-carved out. So the natural vegetation, et cetera, is all destroyed first, and then a agreement to put back non-built area equivalent to that. So, I, I, that's not a question, it's just an observation and a, a request for this group to, to really question when PUDs come in, and, and the expression is preserving, really question on that preservation side, because preservation is different from re-carving out and not building up. And I think that's all the points I had, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, is there anyone else that would like to speak, ma'am? No? Mr. Powell does not want to speak either. All right, shall we close the public comment, and we will go ahead and close the public portion of the hearing on these text amendments?
Have my microphone on, sorry about that, so, in the zoning resolution on Article four point one G, general standards for a PUD plan approval, so in determining whether a PUD plan filed pursuant to this article shall be approved or recommended for approval, the zoning commission and the Anderson Township Board of Trustees shall apply the following general standards, so I think the intent of adding the fifteen isn't to say a PUD should be denied automatically or approved automatically if it's under twenty percent or over twenty percent slope, it's to be a standard for consideration by the zoning commission in light of the entire, what is being proposed, that's the intent. In our comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan does not recommend, it recommends protection of land over twenty percent slope, but that's a recommendation, and then we wanted to make that stronger in the zoning resolution as a standard for consideration, because up to then, we didn't define, we didn't list a certain percentage of slope, but I think it's still, the intent was really for it just to be a standard, not a a determinant, a defined determinant if it's above or below the twenty percent, but definitely would discourage development over.
Yeah, it certainly does imply, you know, it, it now calls out the twenty percent, as Paul and Sarah have drafted up, it calls out twenty percent, and it poses a question for the board to now consider, is it adequately protected or not? Now, somebody might think that if you grade it and puts new stuff in, that's adequately protecting it. Others may likely read it as like, that's supposed to be protected, it's supposed to just be there, so, so they're, like, Paul just, I think, explained it really well. It's not definitive, but it certainly does imply that that twenty percent is certainly a trigger point that needs close examination, that's how I would read it.
Did you have a? You jotted down a first question.
And, and that, that was Mr. Wolf's first question, his second question was, he's wondering about one of these PUDs we heard recently that's being appealed, which I'm not familiar with that one, but he's wondering, do these new standards, are they applicable to not, to that or not, I believe they're not, but I'll let you.
These new standards, no, they're, that case was heard under the current zoning regulations, so what is proposed would not impact that decision.
And then his la- last observation was kind of tied back into the first one, where he's said that, that he's, he's observed that developers have represented that they are going to preserve something, but they really don't, they, they grade it, and then they maybe replanted it or something, and his comment was to raise awareness for this board that. that when we say preserve, I think his thinking is, we need to maybe put a little more meat on the bones of what's meant by that. Is it supposed to be left alone, is it just the underlying slope, that sort of thing? So that's food for thought, you know, from Mr. Wolf, who's participated in a number of these hearings.
Okay.
Appreciate those comments. Okay, so shall we, did we close the public?
So, we did close the public hearing, open up for discussion.
So, gentlemen, so what we'll do here, I'll just, I'm sure you know, but, so we've, we've had a discussion of these proposed amendments that are being put forth by staff. And Paul's and Sarah have characterized them as Exhibits A, B, C, D, and E. So what they're looking for us is to make a motion rec- of recommendation that will then be carried forth to the Board of Trustees of whether this board supports those changes, does not support those changes, et cetera. And I'll just add, since I'm talking here, and then I'll turn it over to you guys, it sounded to me like we would want to pull the Exhibit C, short-term rentals, and ask the staff to look into that further and get us a little more, more information, they captured well the questions we had on that. And then I think the murals, I'm thinking maybe we pull that one as well and see if Paul can maybe come up with a little bit more language that maybe doesn't raise some, some of the red flags, that's my opinion. But let me turn it over to, to, you know, the board, and we don't necessarily have to go in order, but usually Mr. Denning, the, the person on the end gets picked on first just because you're on the end, but we, we could go in reverse order. So I'll just leave it to whoever wants to speak and give your comments.
I would agree with you in regards to both Exhibit C and Exhibit E. Exhibit C, basically, I'm questioning both of ourselves. I have no issues in regards to Exhibit A, and E. And then Exhibit E. I don't know if the language changes anything, since the standards already reference the comprehensive language. It sounds like this is supported in places as well, so I, I mean, I don't have any objections to it because I feel it's kind of always in place of the rest of the document, by referencing the comprehensive language, especially in progressive language. So I don't have an objection to it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. And, and is it Don?
Dungus.
Dungus, thank you, Mr. Dungus.
I have nothing to add for A and B. Like, thoughts on C, the short-term rentals is, there's, it seems to be various definitions in the resolutions for different types of rentals, and I don't know that two short-term rentals can absolutely stand practices as well as what we're defining here or any type of short-term rental, versus having various different definitions and trying to figure out who's calling for what. And then, as far as the condition of leases on them, we discussed, I'd like to read in and review them a little bit, and see, are those, condition of use of those standards different than what you expect to have of normal residents when they're there versus if they're living in a house, and how that would be appropriately addressed. And then, I don't think I have anything further to add on, here, in the other one that we're discussing.
Thank you, Mr. Henson.
Yeah, I think A and B look good as is, I think with C, I share, and just kind of continuing questions about enforcement and what mechanisms you might even utilize to, to see that ability to keep these things perhaps out of court. But to me, I, you know, I'm bigger today, I'm fine with it, it doesn't really change. I had a minor text change to Article 4.1 and 15, that we agreed not to move to, but otherwise also fine with that. And then, I don't have other specific language that can be put into a motion, but yeah, maybe somebody working up a new language.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen, I, I don't have any other comments, I think.
Okay.
I think everything was covered well. So what I'd ask for somebody to make is, is a motion, from what I've heard of the discussion, it seems like we're, there seems to be consensus, which is good, there isn't always consensus on this board, and that's positive as well, but I'm hearing consensus tonight of a favorable recommendation of, to the Board of Trustees proceeding with the text changes in A, Exhibits A, B, and D, and at this time, we're moving for further information, the proposed text changes in Exhibits C and E, so if you're in agreement with that, if somebody would like to make a motion, then we can entertain a motion.
Point of affirmation, perhaps, Paul, are either C and E pressing agreements that may, may define agenda and generalities?
I think if we pulled them, we could bring them back in a month or two.
But there are cases that may rely on this.
I don't think so.
I'm proposing a motion, I'm not making it, I guess I, I, I'm not supposed to, I guess, because I'm the chair, but if somebody would like to make a motion perhaps favorably recommending the text changes in A, B, and D while removing the text changes in C and E, I think that's what we're looking for.
I'll need that.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Two seconded. Okay.
Mr. Dungus made the second. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, roll call please.
Mr. Denning? Mr. Dungus?
Here.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Mr. Eliff?
Yes. Okay. Thank you, nicely done. And that concludes our substantive business, and we have election of officers, but I think we're going to put that off.
I think we'll postpone that till next month.
Any other business, Mr. Drury?
No.
Okay. Motion to adjourn? Stephen Smith, second. Mr. Denning, second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Thank you.